We'll call this meeting of Lima City Council to order. We'll begin tonight's meeting with the invocation by Councilor Glenn, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
All minds clear. Oh heavenly Father, Lord, we thank you so much for this special day, Lord. Lord, we recognize a good group of kids here at Lima Central Catholic, Lord. Lord, bless our mayor, bless our administration, and bless our city councils, Lord. Oh Lord, just spread the blood around this room, Lord, and have us a blessing day in this city tonight, Lord. Loud things come out that need to come out, Lord, in a blessing way, Lord. Lord, bless our city, bless our park that needs so much help, Lord. Loud the people to start calling in and getting on their computer and sending in before we can get Simmons Field going, Lord. Lord, we thank you for all the words and the kind words that you placed in my heart tonight, in Jesus Christ's name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Have a clerk call a roll.
Mr. Gordon?
Yes.
Mr. McLean?
Here.
Mr. Low?
Yes.
Ms. Tebbin?
Me, here.
Ms. Adams?
Here.
Mr. Glenn?
Here.
Did you answer?
No.
Sorry. Ms. Adams?
Here.
Mr. Glenn?
Here.
Mrs. Miles?
Here.
And Mr. Nixon?
Here.
Are there any amendments to tonight's agenda?
Mr. President.
Mr. McLean.
I would like to add to the agenda Communication Number 10.
Second. The motion in the second is to amend tonight's agenda by adding Communication Number 10. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Resolution 914.
Expressing the appreciation of the Lima City Council to the Lima Central Catholic Boys varsity basketball team for winning the OHSAA Division III State Championship.
Mr. President.
Mr. Tebbin.
I move that Resolution 914 be passed on its first reading after having been read.
Second. The motion in the second is to pass Resolution 914 on its first reading after having been read. I'll have a clerk read the resolution at this time.
Whereas on Saturday, March 22, 2014, the Lima Central Catholic Thunderbirds made history by claiming their second state title by winning the Division III State Basketball Final with a victory of 64-62 over Cleveland Villa Angela St. Joseph Vikings. And whereas the Thunderbirds finished the season going 25-4 overall, the team went on to win the sectional final over Allen East, district championship over Finley Liberty Benton, regional championship over Ottawa Landorf, and then advancing to the state championship game and the ultimate victory. And whereas coached by Frank Kill, the LCC Boys Basketball Team has appeared seven times at the OHSAA State Basketball Championship and four times in the OHSAA State Finals. This is Coach Frank Kill's first state championship with a career record after four seasons of '89 and '14. And whereas this victory represents the elements of discipline, dedication, determination, and teamwork represented in all championship teams. And whereas Coach Kill, assistant coaches Ron Williams, Mike O'Connor, and Chaz Quatman, and the team members of the Lima Central Catholic Boys varsity basketball team should be congratulated for their outstanding efforts and sportsmanship throughout the entire 2013-2014 season. Now therefore be it resolved by the Council of the City of Lima, Ohio, that the Lima City Council, on behalf of the entire Lima community, extends sincere appreciation to Lima Central Catholic Boys varsity basketball team and Coach Kill for the honor and recognition they have brought to our community.
Is there any discussion on the motion?
Mr. President.
Mr. Tebbin.
You young men should be very proud of yourselves. What an accomplishment. What is interesting to me as I sit here, and you will remember this for your entire lives, my dad, who is now deceased, was an all-state basketball player for St. Rose High School in 1938.
Wow.
Which was the predecessor, I mean, of the Catholic schools to Lima Central Catholic. He's in the LCC Hall of Fame for athletic accomplishments. And what I think is so interesting is the leadership that you have because Coach Kill, we all know that there was another coach at LCC for a few years who's not there anymore. But Coach Kill is not new to this program because my son played for Coach Kill. He was his JV coach. And he was so impressed and learned so much. And it's obvious that Coach Kill has been able to teach all of you, not only about the game of basketball, but about the game of life. So congratulations and build upon this success. Thank you.
Is there any further discussion? Mr. President. Mr. McLean.
Not only did you have good people that were teaching you the game of basketball, but about the game of life. Mr. Kill came from a championship. He instilled that in your hearts. And I know you wanted to play for him just as hard as you did for yourselves. It was a big day for Mr. Kill also to win that championship. But as he said, you guys will remember this the rest of your life. One thing to take with you no matter where you go, no matter what you do, you'll remember those days. And congratulations.
Any further discussion?
Mr. President.
Mr. Glenn.
One thing you guys did, you guys brought Lima together. There were no such thing as Lima senior, or you live on that side of town, or you live on that side. The whole city came to watch you guys play, to support you guys, you know? And I was so out. It was exciting. And Coach Kill went into the 1-3-1, they didn't know nothing about it. Jake, hold a big guy, I looked at it like, wow, how Jake gonna hold it? It was great. Kimbrough did the shooting, you know? And I mean, you guys, all you guys played a great role in that, you know? And like they say, they said all the words for you, Coach Kill, you know? You've been around, and I know you live in that legacy of Coach Say. When they picked you for coach, I'm like, wow, he got some shoes to fill. And but you've been there, and Coach put you there and had you there, and you're in their system there, and it's great. And I asked when you guys going to the White House, Coach Kill said y'all ready to go to Capitol first. I know President Obama would like to see you guys there. But I thank you guys so much though. You guys well-respected guys and, you know? And Ron, you guys, he was involved with it too, and all the parents that was right there by you guys, you know, stood there on the trail. And we were so excited. It was an exciting ride. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Glenn. Is there any further discussion?
Mr. President.
Mr. Low.
Real short to the LCC team, I want to thank you for flooding my Facebook for the last two weeks. Thank you.
Is there any further discussion?
I just want to offer my congratulations, and while this piece of the road of life is concluded with a championship, you have now set yourself up for a new standard. And all of the things that you've been taught by Coach Kill and all the called coaches that have taken you on this journey, you have to hold yourself to that new standard which you've set for yourself as you go through life. And if you do, you will find out that you will have more victories than losses in life, okay? And when we talk about you'll remember this all of your life, not every day, you're not going to go around and say, hey, I was a state champ, okay? But you know, you're going to find yourself in situations, you're going to say, you know, we were in this situation once before. I was in this situation. I've got to act like a championship and deal with this and carry on, and you will. And that's what we really mean by you'll draw on this the rest of your life. You've been there, you've worked together as a team, as a unit. You all brought your own special piece to the game and to the championship. So congratulations to all of you. It's led heavy from Lima, really are. Appreciate it. Coach Kill, if you want to. Oh, we got a vote, I'm sorry. We'll have the roll call first, and I may not be able to give them to you, I don't know.
Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Mrs. Miles?
Yes.
Mr. Nixon?
Yes.
Mr. Gordon?
Yes.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Low?
Yes.
Mr. Tebbin?
Yes.
And Ms. Adams?
Yes.
It was unanimous. So we did it as a... If you want to say a few words?
All right, thank you. Well, I'd like to say first off, thanks for having us. This is definitely an honor. We talk about life lessons that they'll never forget this, you know? That's what I can try to continue to educate these men, that this is a journey in life, and it's just another chapter of life. And you know, how we got here, we came together as a team, and you know, when you get 15 guys together that come from different parts of the area, you know, and different backgrounds and different homes, to get them to buy into something so special as this was, that was the accomplishment in itself. You know, state championship was pretty amazing. You know, I just, we're just appreciative of being here and the recognition that we could do for Lima. You know, we are Lima Central Catholic, but we are Lima. And one thing I learned from Coach Segerson over the years, that there's a lot of good basketball in Lima, and that, you know, we've been fortunate to have two state championships, and that, you know, we are a representation of this community, you know? I was at the, one of the ice cream places the other day, and just another guy from Lima said, you know, hey, congratulations, thanks for making Lima proud. And that means a lot, you know, the fact that we, you know, I have 15 young men that are amazing young men, you know, they're pretty good basketball players, but they're unbelievable. And you know, I said before the game was over, I was going to shed some tears whether or not because it was my last time being with these guys. And when you're with a group of guys like this the entire season, you know, that's sad. It's like, you know, seeing your kids go off to college, and they're like, huh, that's my boy, you know? So I thank Jesse for the low-key, you know, I shopped at his sport wear, so that's who suited me for the state semifinal and finals game. So I was able to, I was accused of being a Presbyterian minister, but I'm a coach. But I have to thank Jesse for the heads up, so. But again, thank you for having us, and this is something that we'll always remember. Thank you.
All right. Next, we have privilege of the floor Larry Ely. Is Larry here? Okay. We'll move on to the consent calendar.
Mr. President.
Mr. Tebbin.
I move that items A of the consent calendar be received, filed, and approved, and B, C, and D be received and filed.
Second. The motion in the second is to receive, file, and approve item A, and to receive and file items B, C, and D. Is there any discussion on the motion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication number one.
From the Director of Community Development regarding legislation to place tax assessments for property maintenance.
Mr. President.
Mr. Glenn.
I move that communication number one, receive and file legislation on tonight's agenda.
Second. The motion in the second is to receive and file Communication Number One. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication number two.
From the Director of Community Development regarding legislation to enter into a contract with custom staffing.
Mr. President.
Mr. Glenn.
I move that communication number one, receive and file legislation on tonight's agenda.
Second. The motion in the second is to receive and file Communication Number One. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication number two.
From the Director of Community Development regarding legislation to enter into a contract with custom staffing.
Mr. President.
Mr. Glenn.
I move that communication number two, receive and file legislation on tonight's agenda.
Second. The motion in the second is to receive and file Communication Number Two. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication number three.
From the Finance Director regarding legislation for professional financial services.
Mr. President.
Mrs. Miles.
I move that communication number three be received and filed. Legislation is on tonight's agenda.
Second. The motion in the second is to receive and file Communication Number Three. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication number four.
From the Finance Director regarding legislation for budget amendments.
Mr. President.
Mr. Tebbin.
I move that Communication Number Four be received and filed. Legislation is on tonight's agenda.
Second. The motion in the second is to receive and file Communication Number Four. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication number five.
From Chief Martin regarding the renewal of liquor permits.
Mr. President.
Mr. Gordon.
I move that Communication Number Five be received and filed.
Second. The motion in the second is to receive and file Communication Number Five. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Ms. Adams.
I just would like to thank Major Baker and the chief for the report and for the input and recommendation that there are no businesses that they would object to the renewal of their permits. They cited a couple businesses, but they are working with LBD, and that's a win-win situation. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Adams. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication number six.
From the Director of Public Works regarding legislation to submit an application for tiger discretionary funds.
Mr. President.
Ms. Adams.
I move that Communication Number Six be received, filed. Legislation is on tonight's agenda.
Second. The motion in the second is to receive and file Communication Number Six. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication number seven.
From the Director of Public Works regarding legislation to enter into a contract with all-purpose contracting.
Mr. President.
Ms. Adams.
I move that Communication Number Seven be received, filed. Legislation is on tonight's agenda.
Second. The motion in the second is to receive and file Communication Number Seven. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Ms. Adams.
I just wanted to publicly say that this refers to 2014 various storm sewer improvements. There's 10 locations in the city. We were provided a map. I'm happy to say one of the locations is in the Fifth Ward, and talked to Mr. Elstro earlier, and should hopefully be starting maybe the end of this month. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Adams. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication number eight.
From the Director of Public Works regarding legislation to enact preliminary legislation for ODOT's bridge inspection services.
Mr. President.
Ms. Adams.
I move that Communication Number Eight be received, filed. Legislation is on tonight's agenda.
Second. The motion in the second is to receive and file Communication Number Eight. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication number nine.
From the Deputy Director of Public Works regarding legislation to enter into a contract to purchase plow truck and salts forever.
Mr. President.
Ms. Adams.
I move that Communication Number Nine be received, filed. Legislation is on tonight's agenda.
Second. The motion in the second is to receive and file Communication Number Nine. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication number 10.
From the Director of Utilities regarding the refuge contract.
Mr. President. Mr. McLean.
I move that Communication Number 10 be received and filed and referred to Utilities Department.
Second. The motion in the second is to receive and file Communication Number 10 and to refer it to Council's Utilities Committee. Is there any discussion? Mr. President. Mr. McLean.
Briefly, this is our years coming up for the renewal of our waste contract, the beverage contract. So we're going to get ready for the bid process. I have asked Mr. Shealy to send all of Council's some of the past two contracts so that you guys can review them before we have a meeting.
Thank you, Mr. McLean. Is there any other discussion? I have a question. I just want to understand this. So timetable, is any modifications that the committee wants to make or Council wants to make or the administrations by May 5?
By May 5.
Okay. Are we expecting legislation to authorize the bids at that point? So that we can have them back by the 21st, or publication by the 21st, or what? I guess will there be legislation on the 5th to go out for contract or go out for bid, or does that not take legislation?
I think at this point, we wanted to start the dialogue, make sure that we're well ahead, and so we're not further along than that.
Okay.
Whether we go out to bid and come back for legislation, that's also an option. So at this point, we want to make sure that everybody's on the same page about the quality of the service we're currently getting, as well as any additional changes, nuances we need to build into the new contract.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure we were clear on the timetable. Thank you. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Reports of officials. Howard Elstro, Public Works 2013 Annual Report.
Mr. President and Council. In 2013, the Public Works Department continued to operate under the half a million dollar reduction of general fund support that was initiated in 2012. General fund support for 2013 was 55%, with 45% of the funding derived from proprietary sources: stormwater funds, fuel and motor vehicle tax, permissive license tax. In 2013, the Department of Public Works was again able to advance some large capital projects with federal and state resources of approximately $5.6 million. This is a significant reduction from years 2010 and 2011, when the city had access to American Reinvestment Recovery Acts funds, known as ARA or stimulus funds. Going forward, the city will face tough competition for dwindling federal and state resources with annual large capital infrastructure renewal projects totaling around $5.5 to $6 million range. A total of 92 dangerous residential and commercial buildings were demolished using moving Ohio Forward and Community Development Funds, block grant funds in 2013. And I want to note that a significant departmental concern is inability to reinvest in vehicles and equipment on the general fund side, which enable our personnel to provide services. Park maintenance has specifically been affected by aging equipment, and we will continue to be careful stewards of public money in all areas of operation. But note that ample resources need be dedicated to personnel and equipment for Public Works to carry out our designated functions. The report that you have details the sources and accomplishments made by the City of Lima Public Works Department during 2013. You have this for your review. If you are like me, I keep this close to my desk, and it becomes a resource for me year round. But if you have any questions after your review, please do not hesitate to give me a call. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Elstro. Moving on to ordinances, Ordinance 8814.
An ordinance amending the 2014 annual budget.
Mr. President.
Mr. Tebbin.
I move that Ordinance 8814 be passed on its first reading.
Second. The motion in the second is to pass Ordinance 8814 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? Clerk call a roll.
Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Mrs. Miles?
Yes.
Mr. Nixon?
Yes.
Mr. Gordon?
Yes.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Low?
Yes.
Mr. Tebbin?
Yes.
And Ms. Adams?
Yes.
Ordinance 8814 has been passed on its first reading by an 8 to 0 vote. Ordinance 8914.
An ordinance to make a second amendment to Ordinance 18713.
Mr. President.
Mrs. Miles.
I move that Ordinance Number 8914 be passed on its first reading.
Second. The motion in the second is to pass Ordinance 8914 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? Have a clerk call a roll.
Mr. Glenn?
No.
Mrs. Miles?
Yes.
Mr. Nixon?
Yes.
Mr. Gordon?
Yes.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Low?
No.
Mr. Tebbin?
Yes.
And Ms. Adams?
Yes.
Ordinance 8914 has been passed on its first reading by a 6 to 2 vote. Ordinance 9014.
Loving special assessments for property maintenance code charges on premises in the City of Lima, Ohio.
Mr. Glenn.
Oh, Mr. President. Oh, for I was thinking. Mr. President.
Go ahead.
I move that Communication 9014 be, oh, for I am, be passed as it been read, first read. We start over again.
Start again.
I move that Ordinance 8914 be...
9014.
9014, I'm sorry. 9014 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
I was writing.
The motion in the second is to pass Ordinance 9014 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? Have a clerk call a roll.
Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Mrs. Miles?
Yes.
Mr. Nixon?
Yes.
Mr. Gordon?
Yes.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Low?
Yes.
Mr. Tebbin?
Yes.
And Ms. Adams?
Yes.
Ordinance 9014 has been passed on its first reading by an 8 to 0 vote. Ordinance 9114.
Authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with custom staffing Inc. for junk auto and vehicle enforcement.
Mr. President.
Mr. Glenn.
I move that Ordinance 9114 be passed on its first read.
Second. The motion in the second is to pass Ordinance 9114 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? Have a clerk call a roll.
Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Mrs. Miles?
Yes.
Mr. Nixon?
Yes.
Mr. Gordon?
Yes.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Low?
Yes.
Mr. Tebbin?
Yes.
And Ms. Adams?
Yes.
Ordinance 9114 has been passed on its first reading by an 8 to 0 vote. Ordinance 9214.
Granting Council for the arts of greater Lima permission to use the northwest quadrant of the city square to hold a public event.
Mr. President.
Mr. Low? Mr. Low?
I move that ordinance number 9214 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion in the second is to pass ordinance 9214 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? Have a clerk call the roll.
Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Mrs. Miles?
Yes.
Mr. Nixon?
Yes.
Mr. Gordon?
Yes.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Low?
Yes.
Mr. Tevin?
Yes.
And Ms. Adams?
Yes.
Ordinance 9214 has been passed on its first reading by an 8 to 0 vote. Ordinance 9314.
Authorizing the mayor to enter into a professional services agreement with URS consultants.
Mr. President.
Mr. McLean.
I move that ordinance 9314 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion in the second is to pass ordinance 9314 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? Have a clerk call the roll.
Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Mrs. Miles?
Yes.
Mr. Nixon?
Yes.
Mr. Gordon?
Yes.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Low?
Yes.
Mr. Tevin?
Yes.
And Ms. Adams?
Yes.
Ordinance 9314 has been passed on its first reading by an 8 to 0 vote. Ordinance 9414.
Authorizing the mayor to apply for, accept, and administer funds from the National Institute of Justice, Paul Coverdale. Grant.
Mr. President.
Mr. Gordon.
I move that ordinance 9414 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion in the second is to pass ordinance 9414 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? Have a clerk call the roll.
Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Mrs. Miles?
Yes.
Mr. Nixon?
Yes.
Mr. Gordon?
Yes.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Low?
Yes.
Mr. Tevin?
Yes.
And Ms. Adams?
Yes.
Ordinance 9414 has been passed on its first reading by an 8 to 0 vote. Ordinance 9514.
Authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract for the purchase of plow truck and salt spreader.
Mr. President.
Ms. Adams.
I move that ordinance number 95-14 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion in the second is to pass ordinance 9514 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? Have a clerk call the roll.
Mr. Glenn?
Yes.